My name is Councilman Julius Oliver. And this is the First Ward Town Ball Meeting, basically to give updates on what's going on with AARP, some valid issues or charter amendment issues, as well as give you information on roles and responsibilities in the City of Youngstown when it comes to leaders, elected officials, and other people that you might need to be able to get problems solved. So first, I'm gonna go over some ground rules. These are great ground rules. I didn't make them up. But turn your phones off, or me please. Hold questions until the end of the presentation. We didn't start on time, so it's good. Let the speaker complete their thoughts. So just let people, you know, talk through whether somebody asked you a question, whether it's somebody if they're giving a presentation. So this is a first ward meeting. That's why you see a lot of my block watch captains here. Thank you for coming. Thank you, citizens of Youngstown, for coming. And I'll thank my colleagues and my teammates for coming out as well. We move as a team. That's what the city council is. It's a body of governance to be able to affect you in the best way possible, voters. So we're gonna start with roles and responsibilities. Any of my colleagues wanna go over this? Mike?
Thanks Julius. And most people here are familiar faces and you're involved folks, so it's good to see you and thanks for coming out on a Thursday night. As Julius said, we work pretty well together. And we just wanna talk about just the general overview of the branches of government. And sometimes people just, you know, they'll ask questions like that. And this may seem really simple or trivial. Some folks in the room, other people might say, "Oh, I didn't realize it like that." But, you know, local, the City of Youngstown, we have our three branches of government. The executive branch, which is the mayor, similar to, you know, you have the President of the United States or the government, the executives. We have the legislative body, which the city council and other scenarios, just senators or state representatives, or... And then you also have the judicial branch, our judges. So this little thing there, and also a little, this is kinda hokey and old, but it's a... The travelogue ordinance, it's going down the trail where it starts with, you can see this is kinda outdated. It says council, then it'd be councilperson today. Has the idea, goes to the law department, the city clerk gets it to go to city council. You have your first reading, your second reading, your third reading, and then it would get passed or defeated, and then the mayor would sign it, and then it becomes a law. A lot of times at city council, if you do attend our meetings, we pass up as emergency ordinances. It's just faster. Some of the stuff is just very routine that we do. And when other stuff takes longer time or care, it will go through more readings. How to get things done. Who's responsible for what? Most of the responsibilities operating the city fall under the mayor's office and their administrative functions. Councilman Oliver had these handy things printed up that are how to get things done. It has all the phone numbers, because we don't really give a phone book anymore. And the one we get is, I don't know what's in it. Remember the Blue Government pages? I don't think those exist anymore. Those were handy, so... Or you can always look on the internet to find the numbers too, but this is nice to stick on the refrigerator, you know, in the kitchen, so you have that. Has all kinds of useful stuff, or you can contact regarding all kinds of different things. We could, so we wanted to mention. See Click Fix is also something we can talk about, which is an app you can have on your phone where you see something and you can report that. Very easily get that information to the right city department, as opposed to calling. So if you see, you select what kind of problem it is, then it routes that to the correct office. Is anyone use See Click Fix in the room? Got some pretty advanced folks here then. Yeah, I think it's great. And then also, we'll keep letting you know when other things happen too. So sometimes that's a little bit much, and you see all the things going on.
If you don't have it already, there's a QR code on here. If you just open your phone's camera and scan it, it'll automatically take you to where you can download the app on your phone.
So it's pretty handy. So roles and responsibilities. City council is the legislative branch of government, responsible considering and passing the city budget, laws which are ordinances, within the constitutional authority to protect and promote the safety, health, and welfare and the common good of the community. The mission of city council is to be effective stewards of public resources while representing the values of our diverse community. So, pretty straightforward there. The mayor is the chief executive branch of the City of Youngstown. The mayor shall supervise the administration of the city affairs and shall exercise control over all departments and all divisions. So we are your elected representatives, and we do work for you, but the operation, how the city works, largely falls onto our mayor. And we work with our mayor to make sure we get things effectively done. We're there to hold him accountable. Our ultimate accountability is through the budget, through the purse strings of the city. Municipal court, the judicial branch of the City of Youngstown. The mission of municipal court is to ensure access to justice and to serve our community by efficiently and respectfully resolving criminal traffic and civil cases in a fair and impartial manner. And we also have the municipal clerk of court, which maintains the ministers, the records, and the fees pertaining to the operation of the municipal court. And for those of you who've got parking tickets, you might know exactly where it is. I like to walk over and pay them as soon as I get a parking ticket. Okay. And so those are just the overviews of that. Do you want to have any questions on that basic operation? Didn't mean to bore you with the fifth grade civics class, but sometimes people just don't, you know, understand. A lot of times I'll hear, "Your boss." We're a separate branch of government. We don't actually work for the mayor. We work together, and we're the checks and balances. So that's just something funny when we do hear that. Yes?
Something that I, is important to point out is that not every city is run the same way. And Youngstown is run in a certain way that is oftentimes referred to as a strong mayor, weak council scenario. But if you go to like Struthers, they're flipped. They're a strong council, weak mayor scenario. Some cities have city managers that run the city that's not even an elective position. So there's lots of different varieties. So when you see the news or something happening in a city, the process by which that happens isn't always the same.
That's good to point out. And sometimes, I've heard that they voted and said that city council is weak. That doesn't mean they don't have authority. It means that a lot of the authority of administration rests within the mayor. But we do have, our authority is through controlling the budget and controlling the fiscal side of things. So we would actually, you know, our option is defunding things or putting a hold on things like that. But that's a good clarification. And we're a home rule charter, so we make our own rules. We don't follow the state ordinances, so that's a little bit different too. And home rule charters can do things a little bit differently, so.
And that's important, because here's what happens. And this is part of the reason why, you know, we made this roles and responsibilities and how to get things done. Because oftentimes, people don't know who to call or who's responsible for what. Okay, so let's say you have a street light out. That's not actually your councilperson's job to get the street light back on. Everybody understand that? Like that is you, the citizen, the taxpayer's responsibility to get the number off the pole, or the street, or the address where it is. Call Ohio State Senate, report that. But oftentimes, people will get mad at city council because their street light's not back on. And it's like, you know, okay, I would call Ohio State Senate, report it, but it's not actually within our role. You know what I mean? I'll give you another example. Today, I had a lady call, and her tree in front of her house was pulling up the sidewalk. Right? So it's in the devil's tree. So in the devil's tree, it kinda is the city's responsibility. But that's not a city council, like we don't vote on removing the tree. We don't vote on fixing that sidewalk. That's literally an administrative thing. So you can call the parks department, and you'll say, "Hey, this tree needs to be removed. It's pulling up the sidewalk." And in some cases, the parks department will come out, they'll take the tree down. And in some cases, they'll repair the sidewalk too. But that's still an administrative function. That park department falls under the mayor. It doesn't fall under city council. We are not the boss of any department in the city. Our responsibility is to make sure that department has the funds to actually do their job for the year. Okay? It is the mayor's job to run that department. And I often tell people, you can see what a mayor's priority is by what's happening in the city. How the departments are being run, those are the priorities. So our job is to make sure that the mayor has the funds to run his departments. Did I explain that right?
And though, we are, we can be advocates for you though. If you've called, you don't get service, that's when, you know... We ask that, a lot of those things, as Councilman Oliver said, the power's in your hands. And when you're calling for something, if three people call as opposed to one councilman, the squeaky wheel gets toiled, and your problems are gonna get solved. So that's why we encourage folks to do that, and not delay. Not add stuff to the process, but be proactive and help us solve the issues.
Has anybody ever called into city departments and they told you to call your councilperson? That's, that's not, it's not supposed to work. When you call the city department, as the taxpayer, it's their job to go ahead and handle your issue. Okay? They're not supposed to tell you to call your councilperson, because then, guess what? We gotta, we gotta call the same department you just called. And say the same thing you just said, you know? So it's kinda counterproductive. So you have the power, that's the reason why we made these. That's the reason why we're trying to give you this information, because anything that goes on in the city, you have the power to be able to change it at the taxpayer, as the owner, as the constituency. Our jobs, both the administration and the city council, is to serve you, to make sure you have a better quality of life. And these two functions are supposed to work together.
Any questions on any of that?
I have a question. What happens when you call that department repeatedly and nothing happens? Then, then who, you go right to the mayor?
You can, yeah, we encourage you to. And also reach out to us. I mean, we'll advocate and help you with that process, absolutely. But yes.
Yes. Call the mayor. You call the mayor. You can call us, but really, you should call the mayor.
When you call us, we're gonna call the mayor.
And it's his department that's not doing their job. And then they, and it's not because we're lazy, okay? But really, in terms of the total poll, and this is not kinda weird 'cause people think of you like these high forty toy town people. We're at the bottom of that, we're at the bottom of that total poll. Okay? Because if they choose not to respond to us, which they have done in the past, where we are told to go take a hike, okay? Then we have to call the mayor, just like you. And we kvetch, says it kvetch. We kvetch, and we moan and groan and say, "Your guy told me to go up there and pound salt." Yes, you call the mayor, because he is their boss. Do not let it be said, "Oh, your councilperson can get it done." The one who can get that tree taken down at the drop of a hat. If the mayor says, "I'm in the middle of a storm, go cut the tree down." Any mayor, that tree's gonna be cut. Do not believe that tree's not gonna be cut. That department head's job is at that mayor's whim and will. That is how it's even written. They serve at the pleasure of the mayor. Understand this, your law director, your finance director, your chief of police, law department, everyone of them, they serve at the pleasure of the mayor. And we don't, except for the finance director, we have zero... Understand this, we have zero say-so, and who is made the department head? We have zero say-so, who is the chief of police? Former prison chief, police chief here, okay? But we have no say-so, no, no say-so whatsoever. And sometimes you find out who the department head is, the same way that you do on the news. Thank you, Dylan.
I have a question.
Sure.
So, understanding the hierarchy. So when you get to the mayor and you get no answer, then what do you do?
You call your councilperson, and we get to the mayor. We can, we can, even if things that are within our purview to do, we still do them. That's my son.
We just wanna make sure folks understand the process and the structure. But yes, we will advocate for you, and if you've done that, we would encourage you to follow that exercise. You're right. So people know that they're doing, you know, they're following the, you know, the way the system works.
If you can't, if you can't get to the mayor, and you're holding this problem, to go down, you know, talk to his secretary directly, and, you know, say, "I'd like to make an appointment to speak with the mayor," you know?
Who does the mayor answer to?
You.
No one.
Us. You. You shared that answer to us.
And I will tell you though, that overall, we do find a way to work things out. And we do, you know, you may see the news, and sometimes it looks contentious, but this group here that we have working together, work very well. We don't always agree. The majority agree, most of the time. We get stuff done, budgets get passed, the city functions very well. And we don't hold grudges either, you know? If Julius doesn't vote for me one week for something, I'm in favor of it. We don't, it doesn't hold things up next time. So we try to make sure we're very functional. Sometimes it might not appear that way, but we do get along. I think one of the biggest examples of that is when we redistrict the city at the beginning of the year, and we pulled it off in about a week turnaround, because we didn't make it a political process, it was an academic process. We hired YU to make the maps, we met on them, we adjusted the borders as we could, the best, and we did that within, I think it was seven days, which we saw what they did in the state, and how we took them to now even produce Fair Maps. So we made an academic process, we didn't get political on it, so... Mary, did you have something?
I just wanted to point out that it's very frustrating. You guys are legislators and make the law, sign bills, and so then the administration's supposed to implement them. But, and a lot of times, you, or citizens, or everybody, works to pass the bill, and then it's very frustrating when it's not implemented the way it was written. And that's the administration, that's the mayor's job, is to make sure it's implemented. And that's very frustrating, because, you know, we've all worked hard to pass these things, and then nothing changes.
I would say this. As, and I didn't set this meeting up for the first ward to bash the mayor. That's not...
No, I'm not bashing the mayor, I'm just saying.
I'm just saying, the next thing that may come out of my mouth, I just wanna let you know I'm not trying to bash the mayor, even though it might bash. But what I'm trying to say is, regardless of any position of an elected official in the city that you have voted for, that is legally bound to work for you, if you don't voice your concerns or your dissatisfaction with what's happening, they're gonna get the impression that they're doing a good job. If Ms. Sitt didn't every once in a while call me and say, "You ain't doing this," then I, I might've thought I was doing okay, until I got that phone call, like, "Oh, you right, and if Sitt, I forgot to get that done, I'll get on it." You know what I mean? And Mr. Sitt will back her up as well. So they keep me doing what I'm supposed to do. We have to do the same thing when it comes to every position in the city. No matter what, no matter who it is. If we never called on our state rep, or our congressman, or our senator, how in the world do they know what we got going on? Until we stand up and say something. The reason why Youngstown continually stays in the same situation, the same problems, year after year, decade after decade, is because we keep listening to people that are outside of our community telling us what's best for us, instead of us deciding what's best for ourselves.
Let me see. We can criticize. First off, I criticize myself. I don't look in the mirror sometimes, and I just wanna stop the stupid-ality. And that's just being honest about it. But when we, just because we don't agree and we criticize the administration, each other, myself, that doesn't mean that we are, gonna be at odds on everything. We're not there to, no, we weren't once accused of being nothing but rubber stamps. They're like, "All you guys do is say, 'Yes, yes, 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 yes.'" When we say, "No, all you guys, all you gotta do is, you fight the man, you fight the mayor." We take a position based upon each thing being individual. Sometimes we agree, you'll see us go through our, the agenda, and we're like, pop, 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 pop. And then other times, we'll hang over one little thing. But just because we, like Mike said especially, just because we differ on something, that doesn't make us enemies. We're not enemies. We are, we're just trying to sound things out. And sometimes it might sound like a little lystery, a little emotional, but we're really trying to just do our jobs to the best of our abilities. And Mike is absolutely right. Can I say this, Mike? I mean, it sounds like Mike and I would love, we're in love with each other.
Actually, to tell you this, about AARPA, which me and I will talk about, the mayor has a committee that he put together to spend the eighty-two million. They made recommendations to vet that. And council put the need and I on that committee, because we're so different. Those two could agree on, the rest of us are probably gonna agree on it, so... And that's, you know, knowing, working together, you learn how the team works, and we know what each other's, you know, who does what, and we let that person take the lead on different things. So, you know, that is where you learn about that, and we are able to work together with different bodies. It takes time to build that, you know, like a sports team or something like that. You know, who plays what positions the best. I think we're at a point where... I use the example of the redistricting. We did that very well. There was a level of trust. If you didn't trust, you couldn't work with folks, you couldn't get stuff done like that too. We also, you know, there's a level of trust with the administration. When it comes down to doing it and getting it done, we find a way to work together and produce that.
Mike and I have gone at each other on the council floor, like literally, backing forward to like, who's gonna win this battle? And at the end of it, it was just like, okay, we gotta work together. We gotta, we gotta get this done together. And that's really pretty much the overall temperature of city council.
Just the last one we passed yesterday, it was the late, the Teamsters and the administration reached a negotiation on their contract. And they came to us in the summer, and we didn't wanna be put, you know, we put it in committee, and we said, "Both parties go back to the table." Nobody was happy about that. They both, Teams wanted to vote it down, administration wanted to vote for it, but they got allowed to go back to the table and work together. And it produced a contract that passed with, you know, it worked out. So a lot of times, those aren't the sexy fun stories to tell about when we're functioning. But I think we've, you know, we've kinda got over that quite a bit now. So any other questions, or we'll keep the flow going? Sure.
Back to the See Click Fix, you know, also in the spirit of the residents going to the appropriate department first. A lot of the people that I volunteer with are elderly, and they don't either have a smartphone, or they don't wanna try to use the See Click Fix app. And I know that it's on the website as well. Is there another option? Because those people who aren't using a smartphone or using the app also won't go on the city bus site and use it from there, so...
Yeah, they could just call like the traditional, I mean, they're gonna call, yeah, that's an option. I think everyone realizes it doesn't work for everyone, but yes, you can definitely still call those departments. Yep, good question though. So I think we covered the responsibilities very well. And as you can see too, I think we're able to bounce back and forth between us, because we, you know, we do work pretty well together. The charter and the ordinances, those are on the website too. Those are easy to find, if anyone wants to browse around those. Our website has, is always evolving in the city, but I think it's, you can look around and find it. There's a lot of, like Julius said, putting together on here, frequently asked questions. This is a nice, easy, handy guide on, you know, I think there's even, "Who do I contact if there's a dead animal in front of my house?" You know, things like that. So there's all kinds of different handy things on there. I don't know if any of my folks wanna specifically cover the, or talk about. The two past people asked about charter amendments.
Before we get there, I just wanna get to this real quick. City council, we have to vote on what comes down from the administration. So a lot of times, when you see, you know, soundbites on the news, and it's like, "City council did this, or city council did that." Understand that that's not legislation we're producing ourselves, like ninety-nine percent of the time. Where, we have, our job is to vote on what the administration passes down for our approval, and we have to approve those things based on whether they are best beneficial for you or not. Okay? So it's not that city council is like, "Oh, city council decided to close Youngstown City Schools." It's like, it wouldn't be us, it would be, we have to make that choice. You know what I mean? Wait, anybody got any questions about that? I don't know if Mike can explain that, but...
Well, the people that can introduce the legislation in front of city council are the council members, the seven of us, and the mayor. The president council does not, he just chairs the meeting and is a backup for the mayor. So we're the only folks that can introduce legislation. So it's coming from one of the seven, or the mayor. And if the department has it, generally, the mayor would be the sponsor. And sometimes if someone's collaborating together, the councilperson sponsors. Sometimes all seven council members will sponsor it, as the council as a whole, so...
If you look at, if you come to a council meeting or you get our agenda, you can see whose legislation it is. It'll say the mayor, or it'll say Hughes on it, or it'll say Davis, or it'll say Ray. You can see which one of us is putting up that legislation. So just a little bit more information.
One other thing, and we have to vote. We don't get to say, "I abstain." The only time you can abstain is what?
If you have a conflict, a true conflict, and I believe you're supposed to state the conflict that you have.
Exactly.
You can't, we're duty-bound.
There's no out, there's no standing silent. We will vote.
And a conflict can be for a variety of reasons, all kinds. Usually we get an opinion from the law department that says whether or not we should. Some are easier where we would know we have a conflict or something like that. So that is a, that's a good point. The lessons we learn over time. Sometimes we forget some of that as the time passes, so we're ready to talk about. The charter amendment, there's a, charter amendments come up from time to time. And the charter is our, you know, it's like our constitution's our governing document. So you don't, you don't wanna change it all the time, but from time to time, there are, there's housekeeping amendments that we would do. Amendments to the charter shall be submitted to the electorate of the City of Youngstown in a manner providing the constitutional law of the state of Ohio. And there's also a charter review committee that can be convened by the mayor every four years to review and consider recommended charter amendments, but...
I have a question.
Yes.
So, you know, a lot of our residents, I think, I wanna say thank you for certainly sharing the process, because there's a number of folks, I think, who've educated in that way. If you go back right where you're at now, charter review committee, how do you hold accountability to the process that says a charter review committee will be convened by the mayor every four years? But we know that he's been in office more than four years, and there's been no charter review committee convened. So who holds him accountable for that heist of our charter?
The voters ultimately, good question.
So that's what we're speaking to. I think a lot of our residents are wondering, where's that procedural justice?
It's at the ballot box.
But again, we're in that space now, where you're beyond the last ballot, and this has yet to be brought forth. And so what is your recourse at this point?
So if you pay attention at all to how I do things, it may not be, I'm not a political person, right? So, you know, most people would say like, well, you can't really, you know, speak against or, you know, the seated, the seated chosen Democrat, right? So, you know, I'm not that guy, right? So, and I'm not the guy that says either, if this person is black, and I'm black, I can't speak the truth about it. Or, you know what I mean? So... When it comes to our current administration, it's like this. If you don't apply pressure, then most likely you won't see done what you need done. So people wonder why I go live, and I'm like, always like, ah, ah, this is happening, and this is happening. It's because I need people to back what I'm saying, so, in order to apply pressure to get things done. All politicians don't work like that. Some politicians just automatically do what they know the people that voted for them want to see done. Because things were said during the election, things that were said are expected to be done, and they just do them. Others wait until pressure is applied. So in this current administration, what I would say is, you have to apply pressure in order to get things done. I put up a post the other day, I did a story actually with WKBN, and it was, I accused the mayor of playing games, right? So the mayor said he didn't play games. I put up a post, I did a live, I put up a post after that, and I said, "We'll see how fast somebody get hired in the parks department after this post." And guess when the park department director got hired? The next day. Now, it may be a coincidence, like the mayor might have already planned on hiring him the next day. Or that story in that live may have made the mayor say, "Okay, I can't look like I'm actually playing games after I said I'm not playing games, so I need to go ahead and do what I gotta do." So he hired the park director. Now we actually have somebody to talk to when we wanna do our AARP when it comes to the parks. So that's what I mean by applying pressure. If you don't speak up, if we don't, if you don't say, "Hey mayor, you haven't done the charter review, and you've been in office for six years or so, where's, where's the charter review?" Then you might not see it done.
We bring that stuff up at council, at our council meetings, but sometimes, like you said...
We, we need to bring that stuff up at council at our council meetings, but sometimes, like, like you said, we're not in charge of the mayor and the mayor's not in charge of us, so he doesn't have to listen to us. But I had to bring residents to council meetings and ask them to speak on behalf of an issue that I couldn't get the mayor to move on. One was a water line issue. Um, we needed to fix this water main. We had already, we were prompt, you know, we had already made the plans to fix it under the previous administration. We had started the project and then this administration quit halfway through. I had to get the residents to come to the council meetings and help me apply that pressure to the mayor to complete the project. Um, I also had to do it when we had flooding. Um, with, when the residents had their, um, basements backed up with sewage water from, um, a, a water main break that caused a sewage break. Um, the pressure applied on each of us. And I, again, I couldn't get the law department or the administration to do anything on my own. So I had to go and I had to reference, um, things that Councilman Ray had gotten done in the past. So we had some precedent set. And then I had to get the, the, the residents who were affected to come to the meetings and apply that pressure. Sometimes you have to get the news involved. We use the news, too, um, to our advantage. Um, sometimes, again, to apply the pressure. Things, you know, they're not, they're not always as easy as maybe it looks when you see it's all said and done and you read the newspaper article at the very end of the situation.
This is, this is an example of how you do have that power. Uh, just recently, there was a fourteen-year-old little girl found in an abandoned house in Mobile, right? And this house, the neighbors have been asking me to tear this house down forever, like, get this house down, get this house down. And if I had a bulldozer myself, I would've went and knocked it down myself, but I can't do that. I don't know that crap. Um, Derek got a bobcat. I'm gonna start learning my head. But, um, Ms. Sip, and I think Ms. Solomon was out there that day. They approached me and they're like, Councilman, you better get this house down right now. And I'm like, ah, hold on. So I called the ma, I called the cheapest dad, Nikki Postlely. She called the mayor and I'm like, you know, my constituency is demanding this house come down right now. They just found a fourteen-year-old little girl here with some grown man. This is an abandoned house. It didn't come down. The house came down when, like the day after?
The next day.
The next day. See, that's what, that's the power that the mayor got. The next day, damn. But I've been asking for, for years, you know what I mean? So that's the power y'all actually got. Nobody ever wants to look back. And especially in an elected position, you don't wanna look back. But it should be more important to just serve your, your, your community, right? So it's just y'all gotta just apply pressure sometimes. Did we answer that question?
Yeah, I would just say, you know, this is my own personal opinion and experience. You know, as a resident myself, as a small business owner, as a stakeholder in our downtown, I would, I would, I would bet that most folks knows that I apply pressure, but it comes at a great cost. And our residents, some of them are unwilling, some of them are un-deeped and some of them just don't know how to apply that type of pressure. And I'll tell you, you know, that, that pains me to know that the pressure that I have to apply to get things done costs me opportunity. Costs me grant opportunities that my business can't apply to because I have to come through that same government that you're challenging. And they get to decide whether or not my grant application moves forward. And so, you know, that's my personal opinion and experience that that pressure certainly, um, we understand needs to fly, but it comes at a cost. And that's, you know, that's unfortunate that we bear that, at front of that cost as a, as a resident and a business owner myself.
You're right.
Um, you know, you might con, one other thing you could do, I'm not talking about the let's say you personally or you and a group of people. You should also be in contact with an attorney and see if there's anything that you can do through the courts for bringing, um, the legal pressure, legal pressure there on the mayor to take an ask that the charter requires.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's something that.
And that, that's, that is something that people don't wanna, wanna do. I'm not sure if, and I cannot tell you the exact process. John, you were there. I'm telling you, you guys had to go on the outside to, to bring the pressure to bear legally. Okay, I'm gonna say this time again. We represent you, but we're not doing a bullet. At least I'm not. We're gonna take these bullets together. We stand together. You don't get to put the councilman out there and take the brunt of it and take the bullet and say, well, council, you're here to die on a sword for us. No, we're here together and our shield is you, knowing that you got our back. Because one thing, you gotta, I'll just, I'll leave it at that. Thank you, Mike. Mike from me says, shut up, man. Shut up.
Yeah, we're, we're good at the table. Usually we all, we nod each other when we know it's. Okay, yeah.
I would like to know, how will we apply this pressure to the mayor to have our consent suit? Because I have cried three times in one week to have an audience with the mayor, four years before. He had another funeral. I don't think we have any more relatives.
One, one thing you can certainly do is there is a process to speak in front of council or we can work with the administration to have a forum with the administration, something like this. But we wanted to talk of this, the focus of this and why we came together and Councilman Oliver's hosting it is so we could talk as the city council, we're a separate branch, but we all have to work together. You do get frustrated and you have to figure out settings like this or where do we set our priorities to make sure we're putting that pressure together? Because we can't solve everything all at once, but we wanna make sure we're solving the right problems, too.
So you wanna let them know how you can, you, we made it, how long ago did we change the way you can come speak before council?
Four years ago.
Yeah.
So about four years ago, we changed it. You, it used to be you had to wait a couple of weeks or something?
There was, we, we've opened the process because the laws have changed and we have to have that accessibility so folks can talk. So we have updated the process to come to speak at council.
So you can come up until, like, I think you can make your appointment to speak before council up until like eleven o'clock the day before council. So you could come speak and everybody's there. The department heads are there, the mayor's there, the, uh, law director, the finance director, all of council is there. And you can come and speak your, your, your piece publicly. You know what I mean? You can get questions answered right there on the spot. What are you gonna do about this? Okay, they're gonna say either, they're gonna answer you either right there on the spot or they're gonna say, we can set up an appointment for you to come and speak because nobody's gonna just blow you off in front of, 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 of everybody.
And you don't even have to identify yourself. In the city of Youngstown, there's something that you think we might be a little bit too liberal about it. We might need to be a little bit more like Poland. But in Youngstown, we allow anyone to speak at city council at our meetings. Other cities require that you be a resident, which I think is actually the more fair thing to do. It should be your fault, not some other, not someone else's fault. But you don't even have to identify yourself in reality. No one's gonna ask you where do you live at, what's your name? I mean, you can, you can make up a name or whatever you wanna do. But you have that right to, to say, I wanna speak at your city council on such and such an issue. Okay, so, you know, it's a very safe place to be.
Although I do wanna add, though, if you are coming to speak for council to, and want to get the attention of the mayor, I would first call the day of the meeting to make sure the mayor won't be in attendance because he has to, he in front of, ahead of time, he's not going to be there. As an example, if you had came to speak yesterday, he would've not been there. So if you're seeking too much attention, I would just call to make sure that he doesn't get there.
There was a question back there.
Just a question. So, uh, you said that the process has changed. Is it not still three minutes or is it five? Or what is it?
It was five before.
I think it's three.
It's three minutes.
Oh, it's just three minutes, right?
I thought it was a little bit easier to speak freely, sit down and look on how many speakers now are.
Right, it's three minutes now because if we could, we could be more people that comes and speak and we wanna give time for everybody.
Okay. I just wondered if I misunderstood. So you're actually having dialogue with the speakers now?
No, you're not, no, no.
I didn't think so.
After the meeting, you would probably get, yeah, you're speaking, you don't get a dialogue.
Gotcha.
It's not a question and answer. You've already given time to speak. Thank you for the clarification.
When I lived in Youngstown, I remember this one incident with the third work, uh, remember Josephine Hewlett?
Yeah.
She was having trouble on the east side with the cops not doing their job. And, uh, we did a protest right in city hall and all of a sudden that was answered. So let's protest. As we said, bring the fight out into the streets. And that's how it's done sometimes. And it was peaceful. It was, it didn't get violent. We just walked around the city hall with our signs and the media was there. So, you know, like you said, not powered by numbers.
Question up here.
I know we're having a lot of good discussion, but I didn't wanna run out of time if you guys were gonna share, like, how much ARBA funds are left?
Uh, we're gonna talk about some ARBA specifics, but, um, I know that I have a, I wouldn't off the cuff give a, an exact number, you know?
Right, just like, I think, cause some people think some of it's already spent and they didn't know where and there's all this, like, you guys hear the rumors about, you know, how much or it's been gone or no one's gonna know where it was or, you know, it's just.
Everybody has to know where it goes because it all has to go through city council.
On the next slide, we have some, uh, there's some markers.
Every dollar has to be legislated on, so you will, it's very public. We can't meet in, uh, in secret. It's illegal. So all the stuff is documented where it goes and that, so that's one thing. There's sunshine laws we have to obey by. Uh, we can't, after the meeting, go in the back room and decide city business and do that. That's not legal or, or appropriate. So we are governed by those things, but that's a good question. Any people do have or where we're gonna go with it or? And you'd be surprised, you talk about infrastructure, uh, projects and plans that are big dollars. Eighty-two million dollars does go very fast, so.
And you wanna go over there, ARBA, oh, Mike is gonna go.
Yeah, we'll try. And we have the community, uh, these were the, we did the, um, the economic action group went around the city in the summer of twenty-one and did community engagement and they solicited input and there were, um, surveys done. And we took that information and divided the funds. That's what this slide is.
Um, yes, and it, it's, and kind of what the money has to allocate.
The allocate, community, um, community youth, community youth and crack prevention, neighborhood commercial development, public work improvements, um, parks and public facility updates, economic recovery and health and wellness. So those are the, the different buckets and we allocated the, the funds based on the feedback from those surveys. If that makes sense, like.
And there's about thirty-eight million, thirty, almost thirty-nine million left that has not been allocated yet.
This doesn't mean it's actually spent already. It just means that some of this money is here, wanting to go.
So these were the different buckets. This is what was spent and then that's at the bottom there, that's three point, uh, or thirty-eight, uh, million. Thirty-eight point nine million is left. That's what's been allocated for.
And I think it's important to note as well as, even though eighty-two million sounds like a lot, that is only about half of what our annual operating budget is. So yes, it's a lot, but it goes very fast.
And your public, um, public works, is that, oh, I can't see it. Um, in that bucket, does that include the, um, water lines? Is that, is that part of?
There are some water projects that were funded from that, certain ones.
Okay, the reason I'm asking is because I live on, on the east side and we have been experiencing, um, a water problem over there, groundwater.
Yes.
Groundwater and, uh, and so there's been some, you know, a couple of different times water departments come out. And so my concern is that, I guess it's not just the east side, but maybe it's the, most of the city. And so that's my concern. What is the city government doing about the water, uh, situation? Um, especially on my neck of the woods, but, but around the city.
And we've, um, just recently had an update from the Water Commissioner, Harry Johnson.
Legislation specifically for the east side problem to allocate funding to start to create a, a model to fix the problem over there.
So it was putting in like new hydrants.
So the.
Automatic flushers and then there were money to create a plan to fix the problem of it's, it's lack of residents over there and so the water is sitting in the pipes for too long. Um, so a way to figure out how to reroute water, um, and so that it gets pushed quicker through the pipes. And then the automatic flushers on the hydrants, so again, they're constantly moving and being pushed through. And we just allocated a big chunk of money to, to that project at the very last meeting. Not yesterday, not this week, but the week before.
And one of the reasons, and we say why would we have issues with water? When you look at the city's infrastructure, we have an infrastructure that was built for nearly two hundred thousand people and we have around sixty thousand people left in the city. Back in the late seventies, early eighties, we were using sixty-six million gallons of water a day. We use about twenty-two million gallons of water a day. So it's just not as much flowing through the system. The system was designed one way. So these are some things we just passed out to, to solve some of those problems. So it is, it is on the radar. Administration, council was working with them on that, so. Hopefully we, it does, we've, we've done some other stuff to try to remedy those things as well, too. Is there a?
Um, yes, just, just one quick question. Um, my name's Eric, Eric Wells, by the way. Um, what's the status or consensus about the CSOs that are down in the, uh, down in Mill Creek Park? The ones that I saw last summer, they look pretty old.
Yeah, there's, uh, we have a, we have a consent decree, the combined sewage overflow and the city is following through with the plan, I mean, the phases of that as we've been required to do so. So we have a group agreement with the federal government and we're following the agreement we have with the federal government in place.
Cause I was down there, uh, last summer. Matter of fact, I was down there earlier today in another part of the park and that stench is pretty, it can get to you, it gets your attention.
Right, the, the system unfortunately was built over a hundred years ago and works how it was designed to, but we are taking the steps that we agreed to with the federal government to, to remedy that. It's a long process. When we started that agreement, I think it was projected to be a hundred and forty-two million. We've done some upgrades, some phases of the wastewater treatment plant and we have not hit that phase yet from my understanding, but.
I think we're in phase one.
I think we're in phase two. We finished phase one. We haven't quite started phase two.
So, but yes, that is, that is part of the plan and agreement. Any other, or, you know, a few?
Well, I was just gonna suggest that aside on the fourteen million, that's reserved for council. Perhaps you and Anita can repeat, you know, talk about how the proposals and projects come to council based off of.
Let me, I'm gonna declare something real quick. City council, I know it's been out there, city council is not fighting over ARP. There's, there's no beef in council about ARP funds or how we're spending money when it comes to ARP. Everybody has, the fourteen million that was allocated to us were for specific projects that we're trying to get done in our wards that we feel would probably never get done any other time than right now. So that's the reason why we took those specific funds specifically for, I keep saying specific. I hope I'm saying it right. I'm not saying it specifically.
But we wanna make sure we have an impact and I think the burden that most of us are using is what's gonna be lasting. It's not something that's gonna just disappear. We know that in ten or twenty years, you're gonna say, oh, that was done with those ARBA dollars and we have a lasting physical improvement because you just don't get that every once in a while. We said, I mean, eighty-two million, can't do everything with it, but we wanna make sure we have a huge impact as much as we can with it. And based on resident input as well.
Two questions, quick questions. The money that you speak of, the fourteen million that is used for each one of the wards, how can we know what it is that you're planning to do? Where is that written or shown for us to have access to? That's question number one.
Um, so I'm pleased to announce today that, uh, the first ward's ARP, uh, first round of allocation was passed by the Board of Control today. Uh, because they have been held up for so long that today the administration did finally pass three of the projects for the first ward. It's clapped. So the three of my projects, which I had meetings, I had three award meetings in the first ward to kind of decide what we're gonna do with the money. One of the projects, um, is, is for us to get a, a city park redone, Falls Playground. Anybody familiar with Falls Playground?
Yeah.
Uh, we've been trying to get that park redone for a very long time. Um, I'm still working on, we just got a park director, so now I have to have a meeting with him in order to get that. We are the pastor of the city council, so next round is to get that on the Board of Control to get passed as well. So I'm looking, uh, it's looking positive to make that happen. Um, but the project around Falls Playground was approved by Board of Control today. And, uh, Daniel Little is here today. He's actually gonna be the contractor that is gonna redo all the lots around Falls Playground. So it's not just we put a new park in and then we still have dilapidated high grass lots with downed trees and stuff around the park. So he's gonna do a project that's gonna beautify all around, any, every empty lot around Falls Playground. He's gonna beautify that. So our kid. He's gonna beautify that so our kids, our children, we have somewhere to go that is absolutely beautiful all around. There's also another little piece he's gonna touch that has already been done by another contractor, but, uh, we have plans on putting a mural in that space and doing some additional beautification there, so he's gonna handle that as well. So that's one project that's been passed and I think that's fifty, fifty-three, fifty-three thousand dollars to be able to get all of that done, right? So, the other project is seven hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. That is taking the entire block of Lynnwood High Street, I forget the name of the street behind it, I don't know why. Um, but basically it's taking an entire city block and beautifying, new sidewalks, um, curbs, um, three new houses are gonna get built. Uh, the administration has agreed according to our, um, housing strategy that they'll add another two additional housings, houses to this project and some of the houses on that block are also gonna be brought up to standard. So, it, like, there's one house on the corner that, it, it really looks so bad, it looks like it could fall down. So I couldn't do, build three houses and then leave this family in a house that they can't afford to actually fix up. So we're gonna fix that house up for them as well and this is gonna be like a brand new city block. And this is because, and some of you may have experienced it, some of our neighborhoods, insurance companies want to insure, they want to insure their houses, right? So this is something that'll get that value up so insurance companies can, you know, start insuring. Also, other people that live in that neighborhood will start to be able to get loans, to be able to remodel their houses and do some additional upgrades to theirs. And the plan is, is to just get this momentum going all the way up the hill when it comes to the south side. Um, the, the other project is, what's another project? Oh, so, you know, we have food desert, right? So, the other project was allocated thirty thousand dollars to our one, which is a, a food truck basically. And this food truck will be able to go around the first ward and supply groceries door to door or to be able to set up so you can come and buy groceries and hot food out there. So if you, if you can't get to the grocery store, this truck will be able to come to your house or it'll be able to set up somewhere in the neighborhood to make food, healthy food more accessible for you. So those are the three projects that are passed now, there are many more in the works. I probably, I got over three million dollars worth of requests and we know I'm not gonna be able to do all of those. But like Mike said, we're trying to do projects that wouldn't have happened any other time without this money and things that are gonna last long into the future, right? So I want, I want all of us to start rebuilding and being able to put more money into our houses and bring in our neighborhoods up, so this is, this is just the beginning. Beautiful.
Came to talk about updates, I was reminded, I wasn't just texting friends or on TikTok or anything. Someone reminding me that in the presentation, there was the link, and this is the city's website and it's youngstownOhio.gov/ARP. Um, and that's where you can find, we have a, um, dedicated resources so you can see what's going on, how we're spending the money. So this is on the city's website, another piece of the transparency and funding allocations to date and.
Pardon me, sir, I believe the lady had a second question.
Which is where the slide came from.
Right, it could, it could be answered with the second question, but it was, it, it appears to me, I can't see from this far away, that the parks is getting a larger share of finances than the neighborhood development? Is, is that correct or am I, it looks like more numbers in front of the other one than me.
As of so far from the amount that has been allocated so far.
This was the amount we allocated so far to that project, it's not the total amount.
And that amount, you can see on that website how that's being distributed and what neighborhoods that's being used because I actually live in your ward, Lauren, and there's a lot going on over there and it's pretty lockdown tight, even for people like myself who might have finances to beautify and, uh, create affordable homes for people who might wanna live in that neighborhood, it's kind of getting blocked up. And I'm just wondering, like, how all this is going?
So, if I may interject Anita, maybe that would be a good time to, you could kind of discuss what happens at those meetings that you and Mike go to to see what's coming down the pipeline that won't be getting to council? But you were protecting here?
Yeah, the mayor assembled, uh, a committee and he asked council to sit on it, there's members of the administration and there's also some folks that are heads of local foundations that allocate funds regularly and they're good insight on that. And, uh, there was a stack of proposals, I wanna say, started out this thick the binder was. And they went through the first round and we set these meetings, we meet every, uh, twice a month, the same days that city council meetings are, we meet for an hour and a half to two hours depending. And they start out with, uh, just some metrics, the first round was, do they, do they meet the qualifications? Just a very simple, you know, just checking the boxes, does it even qualify? And then from there, each proposal reviewed.
Um, and, and, somebody may have heard this before, um, but let me, two things. First off, I think all of the members of council have probably had those, our, our block watch meetings and things that we've discussed our various projects. Um, so, cause you were asking about how do you, um, who makes the decision, how do people find out what's being done with any ward? Well, you contact your council person. I mean, I know people on my ward are bored silly, cause I've had, I had six or seven meetings and they've heard the same spiel every time, the very same idiom, and it's very boring, but I bore them to death.
But if you make sure that you, to the difference, there's the two million that we each have, but if you applied for money from the general fund of the eighty-eight million to the administration, that's what Mike and Anita are going through. So if you made a formal application at the beginning process, and that's what they're going through.
So, um, but on, so, but on the fourteen million, contact, about fourteen million, the individual ward funds, contact your council person. They, they, they have meetings frequently and so, um, and I know he's bored people too.
Sometimes all the meetings on that counter can do this.
I know, and I understand that, but we try to have a meeting and have a meeting.
I'm not complaining, I'm just saying.
But, we, but we do bore you with our meetings too and, and I apologize that they are.
So there are, and there are, um, on the website too, there's reports on that so that you can see what goes on and what we've done and what they've gone over, administration does. So this is, this is a mayor's committee, but we sit on it.
And how many, how many, we, there was, uh, twice as many, um, dollar requests as what was allocated to the city. Like the city, did we see the eighty-two point seven? I think the mayor said we were at like a hundred and twenty, hundred and thirty million dollars in requests, so we couldn't, obviously could not, um, meet all those requests. So we had to pare them down, run them back, chop them down. That was our first thing, which is, are you a nonprofit? Okay, are, you know, are you a business? And then is it even feasible and is it in Youngstown? I mean, so those first meetings, Mike, I think we did, what, three meetings trying to get this to, just to pare it down from the volumes that we had. And we're still paring things down, I'm not gonna put you on the spot, Nick, okay? But we are still doing that and we're still going through those things. And I think you, we're not the state that just starts seeing these things coming through to, to the public. But we had to discuss things first and we had to do an awful lot of research and we have a great bunch of folks who do the, most of the research for us. But then, but so it's, it's, it's just a long, very long tedious process and.
Just in spending, you know, the eighty-two million in some grants or scenarios, there's always administrative costs. So just to spend that, it takes money just to monitor, make sure stuff complies, we wanna make sure we do it correctly, so that's where. It seems like we're taking a long time, but it's, I guess, the scenario measured twice, cut once, wanna make sure we do it. Some cities hired large, you know, top three largest accounting firms, uh, we saw a presentation by Price Waterhouse to manage our funds for us and we do a lot of it in-house, we did with, for a couple million dollars I would have charged and we were, we did a lot of it in-house with the surveys and stuff like that, are using local nonprofit consultants to do it for us, so. We're going through the process, but if you ask specific questions to your council person or you wanna see a plan or something, you wanna see the money go in your ward, I would reach out to your council person. I have a meeting planned for November for mine for Forts Field, it's a, it's a large area on the west side that is underutilized, it's about nine acres. It's where any community input to see what the, and I take game changer, we've never had this kind of money to be able to do something like that, so.
Thank you, you're welcome, thank you.
Does anybody else want to talk about their, a project?
Could you bring me to that website?
Oh, yeah, it is the, uh, youngstownOhio.gov and it's slash, is it ARP, eh? Yep. You, there's a link on the city's website, it's ARP, just ARP. Youngstown Ohio.
Jimmy?
Go.
Jimmy.
Yep.
May councilman hear you.
Spending the money is not as easy as some want to throw it out there, you know? And fulfilling your request is not as easy as, as law. You know, I went to, we, the mayor with all these meetings and, and I set up and took in all the information that what people wanted to, how to back. The east side has their own unique situation, if you had money, what would you do? Quite frankly, I'm still listening to what we're gonna do with money. Uh, I wanna do something with safety, law enforcement, you know, I wanna do something, make the neighborhood safer. You know, we, we say often time that we don't have, uh, we can't get police, we say we don't have, uh, uh, we can't, I think people refer to east side sometimes as one of the poorest sides of town, I don't know if that's true, I don't think it is. Uh, we have a lot of nice pursuit, but I wanna do something with the housing and that's gonna be a big portion of the money. My parks is gonna be taken care of, I'm trying to do something with the parks. I actually want instead of a program I have been working in trying to hire from my school, Flewies for the city, you know, to build these future jobs that the city has or, and especially within law enforcement, you know? Uh, we wanna take the, the young people from high school, we wanna be able to point them in a direction, you know, and, and if things go well with some of the things I'm doing here with the administration, we will be able to take a portion of the money and get and instruct it and give the, the, the individual kids coming out to school an opportunity to have careers, you know? And, you know, work while careers, you know? So, there's, there's, that's kind of in the, in the heart of it there, we are making changes in the, the way the selection process, hopefully we making changes where the selection process is so that we can do what I'm trying to explain. I gotta do something with my groundhogs.
Thank you, Jimmy. Next month we will talk about squirrel's crack.
It's the number one complaint that my constituents have as to do something with deers and groundhog. And I think the state can, uh, described the groundhog as a berman, you know, and that they subjected to having rabies, you know? And so, it, it, I think it's a hell of a problem. I think some.
But those are things I think we, we suffer from all sides of town, east side being a little more rural life, but maybe that's something that we know the public wants, city council works, so maybe we find a vendor or somebody or a low cost or efficient way that.
I'll spend all our money trying to get rid of.
No, but how to travel and things like that, you know that when the humane agents came to one of our, our, um, committee meetings, they talked about buying, cages to, to catch the cats so that they could take a stray cat and spay or, or, to do that, so. I mean, looking at things like that, but that's a problem that, you know, the wildlife is, the city's changed, definitely, so. Jimmy, do you have anything else?
No, basically, housing, parks, safety, you know? Those are the, those areas that I am trying to spend and we are constantly, and, and we're, we're looking heavily and trying to do something with, uh, smarter kids. We think that I, we've, we've had introductions to, uh, our school system. You know, whether we develop a tutoring program or something that's gonna, uh, merge with the, with the Youngstown city school system, you know, so that we can overcome whatever the problem is that our, our kids are failing, you know, at times when they say they are. So we're looking, we're looking to try to spend some money and to, uh, improve that. Now, I don't have no, no big rocket, but I can't not say that that's not in the heart of it because we ask and that is, that's in our heart of trying to, whether it's tutoring, whether it's, uh, alternative careers, you know, uh, vocational careers or something in this like, we're looking to try to fulfill those kind of worries that going on, so, uh, hey. Do we have it perfect? No, but I'm still trying to put it together, so, I think that's.
Hey, may I, let me councilman.
Oh, um, um, my, my mate, uh, here's why I did a, my rec, my reasoning, or reasoning for myself. I said, I'm, my feedback, like, like I said, I had Buku meetings, um, Jack D were at one of them, one of them. And with, with my constituents, getting feedback on, on what they wanted. And what they, what they asked were very much the same path that, those things that were on that pie chart, the things that they wanted to, to have addressed with the six word fund. So I divvied up my funds, it meant to, one million towards the corridors and one million towards the neighborhoods. My thing about the neighborhoods is that neighborhoods and corners are the lifeline of the city of Youngstown. Neighborhoods is Youngstown. No offense, but downtown Youngstown is not Youngstown.
Thank you.
And I'm not putting it, I, I, honestly, I'm not putting it down.
We're downtown right now.
Downtown right now, however, before there was a downtown Youngstown, there was a Youngstown. So, I, I.
Actually, we actually started downtown.
Actually.
Spring of Olmwood Bridge, that's.
That was the first one, that was a downtown, it was just Youngstown. We didn't have downtown, we didn't have, but, so we, we need, yeah, you wanted, you wanted downtown, but the people left all of Youngstown. People just said, I'm done with Youngstown, I'm gone, and we got a downtown, what do we have, it goes down. Okay, so, I divvied up a million towards corridors and a million towards the neighborhoods. I feel, um, the corridors number are feeders to the neighborhoods. I have three quarters, main quarters, South Island Market and Lynnwood. Okay, um, and I also got to get a spiel, not trying to recreate the uptown. And so, we, and this is about revitalizing that area because that area helped to make the south side of Youngstown the, the wealthy entity that it was, I mean, it was just a jumping, and I don't mean, um, Johnson that, because I'm trying to fair and right with people, like, I don't mean a mob, we're not trying to recreate what the mob did, because the mob made the uptown. We're just trying to make it into a nice destination place and then the rest, the, the sites and things will feet off of it because it's gonna improve it and bring growth back to our area. My neighborhoods and things, we all know that our neighborhoods need help. Jimmy Hughes gave me the words, he said, if we only had, it was always, if we only had the money. And we never had the money to address the things that you folks asked, said it was needed. While we have the money to help improve the, the side streets and not every street, but to address them as, as far as we can take it, as far as we can take it. And how long will it last? It may only last ten years, our improvements. But you know what, maybe five years down the road, something else might happen to help, but we've already got started. But we have to start somewhere, you can't say, well, if we don't have something that's gonna last for the next twenty years, don't do it. Uh-uh, you start today and you start right there in your neighborhood and you start with any street corner, the corner of Warren and Hillman Street? Okay, the corner of Markham and Lothian, uh, at the corner of Auburn Dale, where my hail station is at? Okay, the Shell Station, okay, you start right there and you approve it and you have to make it a place that people can go to so that they, and so that they stop moving from your street. Because I have people, since I've been on council, that street where the Shell Station is at is almost vacant. The people left and they told me why they left, because of the Shell Station. So I have to do something to address those concerns and that's important. And then, um, and make the place a safer place, a destination place. We know I have, um, well, some of you know that, uh, some of my dollars went towards the purchase of the old McDonald's, make that a community resource center and a police substation to address the crime. I speak for myself, because I think I'm you, because I am you. I don't care how great the school system is, if it ain't safe, I'm not going. Yeah, I got, you got to make a place safe. Yeah, I got, you got to make a place safe for me to go to. And that's what I want to do with my daughters. Let's make this, first off, a safe place so that people can come out their house and live their lives. That's it. Oh, operating blue tarp, those blue tarp's on the rooftop? Do they bother you?
Yes.
Okay? Do not blame the homeowners. Our homes have been so devalued. Okay? How can you go there and put a $10,000 roof on your house? You don't have $5,000 in the bank or in that equity in your home.
Right, yeah.
So, we have this money, I'm not solving every problem. I'm not solving every roof, but I can help with 20 rooftops. 20! That's a start and maybe somebody else will come along and pick the rest. Done?
Me, since I picked up half of you.
Thank you, thank you.
I know the good segue, Rachel. Um, I, uh, so COVID created a situation, you know, we've always had emergency home repair, roof repair programs. COVID created a situation where we now have a huge backlog. Um, we had new people applying because they were left unemployed quickly. They were left sick quickly, um, so created a backlog. So part of the money that I'm using is to get, to get caught up, um, on emergency home repairs and roof repairs in the fifth ward and what previously wasn't the fifth ward, but now is in the sixth ward after our redistricting. So I took on both, um, because, you know, those people, they elected me, not you, right?
Well, they did.
So, yeah, so making the, a good, good example, working together. All of my projects, almost all of my projects involve at least one other council person, if not two. Um, the decisions for mine came similarly through the listening tours that created these slides and what were priorities for the people in my ward and then my own personal meetings that I had a handful of a year, year and a half ago at this point, um, and, um, projects that were already taking place in the city, in the ward, that I knew I could enhance those projects where they wouldn't necessarily have, you know? Mahoning Avenue is an example. Mahoning Avenue is just getting, getting paved. That was the start of the project. Um, Mike and I have been talking with Chuck Shashow about using our ARP funds to enhance that so that we can bring the entire corridor up and elevate it much like they're doing downtown. They're to push that out into the corridor. So Mahoning Avenue is an example of a project that was already taking place that I can use ARP dollars to, um, upgrade it, enhance it, do more than just a street paving scenario there. Uh, Glenwood Avenue is another one. There's a, that's the other corridor in my ward. It has, um, uh, there's a project already taking place to rehab Glenwood Avenue. The Julius, myself and Anita have been in talks with the administration and with various other groups working on the project plan to use ARP dollars to enhance that project, make it better, add more features that, um, that are going to help the residents over there, help the businesses over there because there's a lot of growth happening on Glenwood, a lot of growth happening on Mahoning Avenue. Uh, the other thing is a park. I, I used to have two parks, Glenwood, I had to give to Anita, although that's completely renovated. It was renovated a few years back. My other park is right behind Kirkmere School, hasn't been touched since the 90s. So renovating that park, uh, is going to, I'm going to use money for that project as well as access to the park. There's an entire section of the fifth ward neighborhood that kind of sit above there that can't get to the park um, through a walk, like a walking scenario. And there's no parking at that park, there's no parking lot, it's the school's parking lot. So really it's like it's a walkable, you have to walk to it. Um, so making it access through a walking trail that not only connects, the position of it, it can dump right into Mill Creek Park and pick up the walking trails in Mill Creek Park or the bike path. So it would connect Mill Creek Park to the business corridors, um, that we have along Canfield Road, but also Kirkmere and the neighborhoods up there above Kirkmere School. The park technically doesn't have a name, um, above the park. And, uh, and then that way more people have access to the park itself and to the other parts of the neighborhood in a safe way. And those are, those are the main, main projects. I'm also working with the schools during, to, on the renovation of that park to make sure since Kirkmere is right there, that whatever goes into the park is something that they can benefit from too if they need to use it. But also then it has to be a multi-generational park because the surrounding commute, the neighborhoods around it are, they're, it's multi-generational. There's just as many, um, retirees folks as there are families with really young kids in that neighborhood. Um, and then a couple other, there's a couple other small projects again that are happening that I can enhance. There's a Safe Rocks School project. We applied for the grant, won the grant. It, it, we already did McGuffey, which has now changed name. This one will be for Kirkmere. I can enhance that project with some dollars. I can expand it, it can go further, we can make bigger improvements. So there's a couple of small things like that that, uh, I'm saying I'm using the money for. But again, the main, the main point is touching, another one is the safety, the camera safety program that I implemented, expanding that. Um, but the main thing is making sure that it's, it's reflecting the priorities that were laid out during the listening tour um, and during the meetings that I had.
So, right. Yes, I, I have a question for Councilman McNally, but prior to that, if I can make a statement following up on something you said earlier. There's, there's few people in this room my age and or older, but none of us were alive during W, our, during. Thank you, WPA. My point being is you made a comment about projects of, of gurk size and being longstanding projects, long-term projects. And I think that would be a better projection, not with the, the seven council money supported, but on the bigger level, okay? Things that can stand for years and generations to come with people in this room. And that leads me to a question for Councilman McNally. You mentioned adding features, okay? Uh, Anita mentioned the, the South Avenue, the Glenwood, excuse me, and the Market Street. But you, you talked about adding features on Glenwood and partnering with, with Mike. On the features, are you talking about other infrastructure features such as sewer and water lines, et cetera, et cetera, that are gonna last those generations? That people can look at that. I think, I think that was the bo, the bottom line on these monies being afforded to everybody in America. So I mean, that is a question.
Yeah, those are, yeah, they're, they're infrastructure enhancements. Like we would pave the road, we would never do curbs and sidewalks, we'd never have the money. Now we do. Now we can make crosswalks. Now we can make it more, we can add landscaping that we would never normally do, but makes a huge difference on curb appeal, on safety, on people, it looking, inviting and inviting neighborhood for people and inviting corridor for people to come to and hang out in and shop in and, and stuff like that. So those are the types of enhancements and they, they do last. I mean, you know, sidewalks and the last long end of the road. But yes, the water and wastewater is part of, I believe it's part of Mahoning Avenue, um, project, I think, in general.
The original, it's, I believe, state funds, but when you do those upgrades generally, you're gonna do those with that. If you tear a road like we did, um, Wick and Fifth Avenue, they made upgrades that were appropriate at that time. You don't wanna.
Kudos to both of you because I came down Mahoning to come here and it's a rough summer right now.
Out here, out here is just a. They build a table, we're. I think we have a bashing.
Yeah, yes. So similar to what my colleagues have done, um, where we're going to be allotting the funds for the seventh ward are based on local needs are of the residents that was surveyed. And most of those things, um, circle around quality of life. So we want to do things like improve the parks, sidewalk, um, replacement, corridor enhancements and some neighborhood development projects. Uh, what I do want to touch on are specifically those projects that have already been passed through council and are waiting to go through border control. Uh, one of which is the improvement of Lynn Park. The plan is to actually improve all of the parks. I'm very proud to say that the seventh ward is the home of most parks in the city. And we're very fortunate to be in a position where we're going to be able to replace a lot of equipment and make improvements, um, to those parks. Starting with Lynn, uh, where legislation was already passed and we're waiting to be, for it to be approved through the border control. Second, we will then be working, um, at the same time doing IT in Pembroke. Um, so that's very exciting. But the thing that I'm most excited about and I think has been a long time coming, most of the grievances and concerns in the seventh ward, uh, revolve around quality of life issues and code enforcement issues. And we are now going to, hopefully soon when it passes border control, we are going to have a quality of life and property maintenance ambassador just for the seventh ward. Uh, they are going to be working in conjunction with Mike Durkin, our superintendent of code enforcement, and they are going to be going through, um, and doing property surveys of the exteriors of those properties. Um, if they, if a citation needs to be given at that time, they will actually let the city know. The city will be issuing the physical citation. They will be able to be a point of contact for the residents if there are any, you know, code enforcement issues. And that will then allow our community police officer, who's actually your officer Curry, to do more community police and allow this person to do those quality of life, um, issues. They will be coming to our neighborhood blockages and I'm just excited because it is one of the biggest concerns that we have in the seventh ward. So the money was allotted and set aside to have a designated person for two years. Um, and then hopefully at that time, at least we could have caught up with a lot of those issues. And by that time, maybe also in general, the city could also have more employees working directly for the city, uh, you know, with the code enforcement department. Um, but most of the things that we're working on are quality of life. But the two projects that have passed legislatively so far are Lynn Park and this quality of life, um, code enforcement ambassador. And the other projects are still ongoing, still asking the residents what their priorities are and then working on a budget, um, to see the feasibility of what we can do and what we can add on with what administration's planning to do already.
Thanks. I'm still working, I'll, we'll go ahead and, but I mentioned some of the things. I, my first allocation was $200,000, um, to the Port Authority focusing on Mahoning Avenue, which is the major corridor through the west side. More than I share Mahoning Avenue, it's the border of the fourth and, uh, fifth ward. And we know that we've worked with other groups and some of this stuff takes time, getting empty buildings, acquiring them, having the funds to rehab those, you know? It's one thing to get a building, but it's other thing for a business to have a building that's ready to go into it. So we worked with the Port Authority and Economic Action Group on a project that's coming to fruition. There's a coffee shop and a cold brew coffee, uh, brewer coming into Mahoning Avenue repurposing the old Dave's Auto Parts. Before that was Bernard Auto Parts. It was 10 parcels there, it sat vacant for a long time. And seeing all those moving parts and how, working with the Port Authority, working with the, the previous owner to give us that, we're the local bank to move it for closure. So those things take a long time. So want to focus on economic development. We're starting with the $200,000, um, to either acquire properties or to improve properties or do different things. Um, so we're working on that. One of these ports, I mentioned ports is about, I think somewhere between maybe like eight acres. It's a huge area with a WPA project pool. Unfortunately, that pool, the, the baseball field held more water than the pool. There's ducks in the baseball field all the time. Water went right out of the pool, uh, constantly, so that was, was taken out. Uh, when Mayor McNally was, uh, helped us get that down. But there was a rugby team that wanted to go there for a while, that never panned out. So we know that we did a good analysis. Councilman Adams act worked on the parks and the inventory and said, what do we have and what do we need? So we are gonna get the base there and then I'm gonna do a community engagement meeting, um, on, on November 15. And we're doing a mailing, actually want to make sure residents get that so in the, uh, the radius around the park to make sure we get the feedback so we can do the features that we need. Uh, people have talked about walking trails. We know that I've done some upgrades with lighting. The bathroom building is still there. The way they built those buildings, they're solid. So just making it back into, into use and doing that as our first one. Mahoning, putting that in and then I'm still over for some ideas. I want to do as much as we can though for local businesses as well because those were impacted and see what we can do on that. So, um, how'd you go on the presentation? We miss any topics? I think we're coming to an end trying to keep people on track.
The last thing is, uh, just, um, talking through the charter amendment issue. Councilman.
Yeah, there is a charter amendment. I will.
I want to say something first.
Good.
First, I want to apologize to Councilman John Swires. In my, uh, I was very upset because there's a group of people that are just flat out lying on me and my council members, colleagues, um, saying we're, they're outside of bars recording stuff at 3:00 in the morning saying like, where's the council person? And it's like, we're not at the bar at 3:00 in the morning. Like, I, I mean, at one point in my life I was, but I'm married now and my wife doesn't want me there at this time. So, um, but it's like they're, they're recording and pointing out certain situations in the city, making people think that it's our responsibility to take care of those things. Like, oh, look at this pothole, where's the council person? And it's like, dude, why don't you stand there recording and call the street department and get the count? Get it filled in, you know? So they're just spreading a lot of lies and a lot of falsities, um, particularly about me saying I was at a gas station on South Avenue, dancing on top of my car, playing loud music. It's like, number one, I can't dance. Number two, you're never gonna catch me on top of my car. I'm a car guy, I love my cars. You almost gotta take your shoes off before you get in it.
He doesn't like riding in my car.
So it, it's just, these are the type of lies that are being put out. And these are the same people that put this charter amendment on the ballot. And I lumped Councilman Swires into their group and I said some things that may have projected onto him as if I was talking about him. I didn't mean to project those things onto him, so I want to apologize to you for that. Um, I'm sorry, I didn't mean, you know, to make you look like you were a part of that group or that you were in any way a racist of any kind.
Thank you, Julius, I appreciate that.
Yes, sir, I appreciate you for accepting my apology.
We're not, we don't get it, always get it right and we, you know?
Regarding, regarding these charter amendments that are proposed right now, I mean, I have yet to hear anybody make reference to the point where when the original charter was brought forth, there were term limits in place and those terms, if correct me if I'm wrong, were two terms. John is walking out, but I'm sure he'll reiterate, two terms, right? Original charter, two terms. That stood in place for years and then another group that looked at, uh, cleaning up the charter, making it more efficient for the city, felt the necessity to take away, take the, to put it on the ballot to the people. And they did. And the people overwhelmingly voted to take away the term limits. Am I correct? That has not been stated in the media at all. That now you have a handful of soothsayers that are just throwing it into the wind, trying to make the, I was gonna say the seven, the six of you, you know, look like they've just been holding these seats forever.
And it's per, and it's personal. It's not like, you know, they're putting this on the ballot going to improve the city.
That's sad that it hasn't been brought up.
Well, and, and I would just say, I think the takeaway of this is we're accessible. If you have questions, ask. We are working for you. We know that this is the election season, you hear all kind of crazy stuff. People say all kinds of stuff that just is not true and it's sad, the amount of misinformation that's out there. And that's why we want to do things like this more and we're gonna do them in all of our wards or some combined meetings to make sure you have access to the public, you see us. The pandemic set us back years and we had a lot of great things going on, we saw each other regularly and we need to get back to that, but there are some folks out there just spreading just complete nonsense, so.
I think somebody said it earlier today, you know, your voices at the ballot box, you know, being term limits for council, for mayor, for one, the term limits for one and not the other. Um, that creates a whole imbalance of power in and of itself. At a local level, you guys have so much power at the ballot box and it is so accessible for anybody to run for council. Um, it's not out of reach of anybody sitting in this room. Any one of you can run. Um, in, in, so that's, for me, that's where I wish more people went to the ballot box and voted instead of, you know, trying to impose rules and regulations, um, that just end up making it harder to do the job.
One of the goofy things was that we are backed by, you know, special interests and all this money. Our campaign finance reports are on the council's website. You can look at them. Most of us have little to no money left in our campaign finance accounts. It was friends and neighbors buying small tickets to fund our campaigns. So those, that's just preposterous and made up. There's not any, you know, there, there's not these big checks that there, someone's funding us to do that. Jackie had her...
Yeah, before, I, I wanted to ask before you got into that whole dialogue on, on term limits, uh, if, if any of the council people could, uh, clarify what, uh, been recently presented on the news about if you mow it, you own it?
The mow to own?
That's Anita's baby, so...
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Could you explain, um, could you explain that?
Mow to own, number one. Working on that for a while. And, um, I had a neighbor, not a neighbor, I had a lady, and she, she takes care of one, two lots next door to her. She's been taking care of it for, forever it seems like. And she's like, how can I get these lots? And I, I was just, you know, did research and you realize there's cities all around us. We have a mow to own program, which is if you maintain it, okay? And it's next, and it's next door to your property, adjacent to your home, okay? Then you get first dibs if you want to purchase it. You maintain it and you, and the agreement is, you do an, an agreement that says, and you can't sell it. You know, like, oh, buy this land and sell it for a profit and stuff like that. You have to maintain it for at least another five years. But it's mow to own. There is an application fee, that's, and I, I, the app, the application fee might be, in my opinion, $40 too high. That's all. Um, and then it's, it's your property. And you have to take care of it, you got to get a taxes on it. And then there's, go ahead, Jackie.
Does it have to be, uh, next door? Could it be like the, the back of your property? Or does it have to be, you know, like next door?
I think it has to be touching.
It has to be touching, yeah.
Well, yeah, from the back, but it's, the backside of it.
Yeah, it has to be like this side or this side, but like, let's say it's a lot behind you.
Yeah, right.
Which is what I would check out.
Right.
But then, um, but, um, then you, and if I took care of it, then I'd have first dibs.
Okay.
Now, the one thing that I really liked in it...
How we deal with a dispute with...
Two neighbors?
Yeah, like, it was, it's in my backyard, but the neighbor next to me is, you know...
Who's taking care of it, though?
We both was taking care of it.
Oh, I love... I think probably we got the applica, I mean, this is being serious. Because I, I have no idea, that's a good question. It might be...
The legislation's in the second reading, though, and we are going to make, make some adjustments.
I understand, we have ties in everything. Okay, and, I mean, when you get, when you get on the police department and there's a tie score, okay? Who gets the first job? Who gets it first, Jimmy? The one who got the application.
One who put the application in first.
There you go.
That has something to do with the locker room.
But that's how, I mean, there's, there's always something that's going and saying, it's this way or this way. And normally it's about who applied first, because let's say someone just wants to be a nuisance, a noise, something like that, and they just apply for it just to spite you. Just to spite you. But at least you, if you had to, and first, if yours was already in, then you would have first dibs.
Is this something that is current right now?
It's passing right, it's in, it's in legislative process right now.
Yes. I mean, that's something that people said that they wanted to hear in the upstairs, oh, no, we try to respond, that's all.
Sorry, do you have one?
Yes, um, I touched on what she just said. Uh, I own seven and a half lots on the lease. I put the application in seven years ago. I cut 28 trees down. I mowed it every other day. I just got the deed for it two months ago. I don't need to stay on the lease. I stay in the inner city of 5th Ward. So I'm saying it like this, you have to actually go downtown. Whenever they figure out where they go put the land, they get. Again, you have to put the application in, then you'll pay $10 a year for that lot. You have to keep mowing it. You can cut the trees down, you can put the fence up, you can put the deeds there, you can do everything you want on it. But in about five years, then they're going to come to you and say, do you want to continue owning it, or you want to give it away? I own nine and a half lots, but the lots are next door to the guy that's been mowing that lot for those same odd years that I had it. I gave him that lot. So I stayed four blocks away from there. And instead of me saying, it's your fault, it's your fault, it's your fault, it's your fault, I just acted on the land. If you keep acting on the land, and you record it, you write it down, you mow it, get your taxes, get your write-off, everything, and eventually they give you the deed. It's more or less like, it's hard to get, it's hard for people to keep pointing finger at them when they can say everything they possibly can say to help us. But it's somebody's signature that we need to make that process go forward, and he act like he don't have a pen or a pencil and stuff. You keep mowing it, and you write those days down, and you go balance the land, babe, that's how you get away.
That's what, that's what we're working on, that's what kind of why it's in the second reading, just to, you know, hash out the details. So you're explaining a process through county land, man. Our process is through the city's land, man. So what we're trying to do is make sure they match. You know, so if the city's process is easier than a county's land, man, process, I would like it to be the city's overall. I don't, I don't necessarily want the county to be in control of really any city properties. I really don't think the city should control all of its properties. But since this organization is already in place, we're going to take the time to actually see if we can just make sure they are streamlined enough to actually work the vote.
I mean, they, two years ago, I had the purpose to sit in these meetings, they said they were going to start knocking houses down. When they start knocking houses down, to become ground open here. They were pushing those lots, they was pushing those vacant lots on people basically because they, you know, they want to make money.
Well...
Do we think this meeting was helpful, was it helpful to everybody?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Thank you, this was a great audience. You guys are all very, good questions. We, I mean, we appreciate that when we're up here, it wasn't, uh, you know, people weren't yelling at us, it was all agree. And I guess next, just the, uh, the last takeaway is don't forget to vote. Um, and we do, I hope it's obvious that we do work well together. It takes time to get there, and we're in for do more now in our seventh year together than we did the previous years, with a level of trust and to do things. So, we're out here working for you. If you need us, let us know, and we'll let you know when the next meeting's going to be. Thank you, have a good night.